Welcome to the Dayton Conservation Commission meeting. This public meeting is opening at 7:00 PM at the Old Town Hall. This meeting is video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting at www.dighton.mash.gov and YouTube, wherever you want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is to review and approve minutes for our January 19th meeting and February 2nd meeting. Let's take January 19th first, has everyone had time to review that at their home on the internet. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll now move to the February 2nd minutes. Is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have our annual reorganization of the commission and addition of associate What we have here is, Charlie, maybe you want to head start with that?
Start with...
With, well, you said annual reorganization. Do you have any motion to make for reorganization?
No, I can motion that I would, you would remain as chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jim, excuse me, and the item is the inquiry for Mr. Reynolds, so that's what you need to review, discuss, and act.
We have an addition, a request from Mr. Paul Reynolds to become an associate member. We have dealt already with his application, we have viewed it. Is there a motion to accept Mr. Reynolds as an associate member to the commission?
I'll do that.
He's here.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that will be passed on our vote to recommend to the selectmen that Mr. Reynolds become an associate member to the Dayton Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't, Mr. Reynolds, if you wish, if you want, you can, why don't you come up here and sit next to Lisa and maybe get a bird's eye view of what she's doing and...
Here's your minute, here's your... Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a continued hearing. The hearing was from DI Trust Comprehensive Conservation Subdivision, which seeks to construct 135 single-family homes and 13,137 linear feet of associated roadway off of Forest Street. Outback Engineering, representing them, has requested a continuance to March 16th.
I make a motion, we continue DI Trust till 16th of March.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another hearing that has been continued is from Reed Brothers Farms Limited Liability Partnership. They have a file number 17-447. Outback Engineering is representing them as well and has requested a continuance to March 16th.
I make a motion, we continue Reed Brothers Farms till March 16th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yet again, we have a continued hearing. It's abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, also known as an ENRAD, by Leopold Spec 1130, Brig Street, map eight lot six dash two. Resources included but not limited to the bordering vegetated wetland and the 100-foot inner riparian and the 200-foot outer riparian zones and mean annual high water of the Segreganset River. The DEP file number is 17-465. Home Green Engineering LLC has requested a continuance to March 16th.
Make a motion, we continue Brig Street till March 16th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a new hearing. It's a request for an amended order of conditions. Clearway Energy Group, 2050 Williams Street, map 11, lot 8-1 and 9, DEP file number 17-396. Do we have representation? Okay.
Hello?
Hello.
My name is Joseph Bertherman. I'm, my name is Joseph Bertherman, I'm with TRC Companies, I'm a wetland, Joseph.
Joseph.
I'm a wetland scientist and I'm representing Clearway. I'm the one who submitted the request to amend the order of conditions. With this request, we're just looking to add an additional single utility pole adjacent to Vernal Pool that is next to the access road that heads into the solar array. The utility pole is proposed to be put within the 100-foot buffer zone but outside of any other wetland buffer zones or setbacks. But the utility pole is proposed to be placed within the area that has already been disturbed and developed inside the limit of disturbance and directly adjacent to the access road, which has already been constructed into the solar array.
Okay, now, why are you needing an additional pole?
So, when they designed it, I believe they were trying to avoid putting a pole in that place within the buffer zone, but they didn't realize that the electrical power lines needed a closer span of poles in order to be able to connect them from the, to the grid. So basically, they have too large of a span between the utility poles that are already in place on site.
Okay, and so, and that drilling of putting in the utility pole only takes, what, two, three feet?
It's about 12 inches diameter pole, yeah.
Okay. Lisa, we have, you and I have spoken on this and this is a...
Yeah, yeah, it's within the limit, existing limit of work, so the only other question is there's changes to the plan regarding stormwater that I would like that to be addressed with the commission because they're not being kept up to speed by what stormwater has agreed to.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? You have?
Oh, yeah, Chris Ryan with Meridian Associates. We are the site engineers. We, the project recently went through a peer review by Beta Group. There were a series of comments that we addressed at the last stormwater hearing last month. Todd Pilling, the stormwater agent, had some further comments that we then addressed and he's since signed off on it. Basically, the reviewer from Beta had some questions regarding the access road within the limits of the array. These are all changes that were outside of the conservation area of jurisdiction. So we made some minor modifications to some of the detention pond outlet structures and to the infiltration basin that is in the extreme northwest of the site, far, very far away from the crossing. So we made those changes. They asked for a few clarification details within those. So we, basically, it amounted to tweaking some of the grading in and around the basins, tweaking some of the proposed grades on the access road as it loops back throughout, through the, through the array. And we modified a detail for the, for the infiltration trench that goes, runs concurrently along the, along the access driveway. So Todd reviewed them, we went out and did a site walk with him, and he has reviewed all those changes and didn't have any further comments, and he was satisfied, and the reviewer from Beta was also satisfied, to my understanding.
Okay, the audience, you heard the name Beta. Beta is a peer review company that we hire, but the applicant pays for. They are working for the Dayton Conservation Commission, and they give us advice on large projects such as this, since sometimes it requires very technical expertise to assist this commission. So if you hear the word Beta again, there are go-to people to act in our behalf. Does anyone have any questions?
So the order will need to be amended, so that's what you need to act on.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Okay, is this, what?
On this project.
On, yes. Thank you, Bill. Is, do we have a motion to issue an amended order of conditions?
Motion to... No. Motion to order of conditions to Clearway Energy Group.
An amended order.
Okay, and you seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay.
And who should I get them to? You, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to pick them up?
Yeah.
I'll do that. I ruled you, I ruled you.
Okay, can we have a new hearing? It's an ENRAD application by Dean Smith, Dayton Energy Storage, for Zero Maynard Lane, map one, lots 82 and 82-7 and 96, DEP file number 17-476.
I wasn't sure what the setup would be like here tonight.
Well, we want, we want to read it.
Yeah, I know that everybody is going to need to see it. Let's put it back.
Okay. For those of you wondering where Maynard Lane is, you're on Route 44, heading towards Providence, you take a right on the Chestnut Street, go about a mile, and then you have North Street, and then off of North Street you have Maynard Lane. Now you're lost.
Good evening, Dean Smith from New Leaf Energy, for the record. I have my colleague Brendan Newell with me this evening. We're here to present an ENRAD request for a project. It's right in the northwest corner of Dayton, on the town line with Rehoboth. So Rehoboth is north of the site as well as west of the site. This pink boundary is several parcels that are part of our project under separate ownership. There are two small, isolated wetlands in the southern portion of the property that have been delineated by our consultant, so we're here to present that to you tonight. Here is a site plan of property showing the wetland locations. This is a transmission corridor for the utility. So we're planning to put a development on the property, but we will also stay out of your 50-foot no structure buffer and planning to stay out of both that and the 25-foot no touch.
Exactly where is it? Would it be put on the...
The project would be mostly in the northern portion of the site. This property to the north is owned by the utility, and Reynolds, there's a new Reynolds substation that's under construction there. So we're planning a renewable energy project here, right beside the utility site, so that we can interconnect with their substation.
No, can we have solar panels?
No.
We're talking about battery storage in this case, a standalone battery storage project. So it'll be connected directly into the transmission system in the corridor.
However, we're not here to discuss that, we're just going with the application itself, which is the ENRAD. They'll have to come back before us for the notice of intent for the project.
Correct. Once our project is fully proposed and designed, we would come back to you for a notice of intent for the development itself.
They're just trying to figure out the feasibility based on the resources, so...
Right, we're just trying to lock down your jurisdiction so that we can stay away from it with our design.
Well, it's going to be built in the buffer zone, more than 100 feet away from the wetland?
In the outer portion, yes. We would be more than 50 feet away from the resources.
But still in the buffer zone?
We would be in the buffer zone likely. We haven't, you know, we haven't had a final layout yet, but we want to know exactly where these are so that we can stay away from them.
Lisa, you have done more with this...
So, it's my opinion that I believe this site would also qualify for Beta to review this. It's a large site, you know, it's going to be a big project.
Okay, so what we need is a delineation of the wetlands?
We provided, yeah, we did provide that.
Peer review, we want peer review.
Right, I wasn't expecting a decision from the commission tonight. I was anticipating that, that we would, yeah, that we would need a peer reviewer, there'd need to be a site visit, and other things conducted before you'd have all the information you need to make any decisions.
Okay, so we'll vote for a peer review and request 53G money?
Yep.
Lisa, have you by any chance contacted Beta?
No, not before the meeting.
Okay, all right.
That dark line at the top, no, yeah, going across, is that the town line?
This is the town line I hear, and it also comes down the west side.
Resource area delineation, what's that? AM.
And you're going to stay on this side of the transmission line?
Yes.
What's the AM?
How are you getting in and out of there?
The entrance will come in following Maynard Lane, cross, cross the utility corridor to remain part of the site.
Okay, so, so what you're asking us for then is a wetland delineation approval and then to continue one after this?
Right, we'll, we'll come back to you with a full notice of intent.
Okay, all right, so if we say that we need Beta to do the peer review, you'll be required, Lisa will let you know on what the estimate, estimated cost is to put in the 53G account.
Okay, sure, yeah, as soon as she...
Charlie, Charlie does it still, sir.
Okay, well, yes, so do we have a motion to request funding for a 53G account, so...
Did he have to wait until he filed something?
He did file.
He did file, here, it's ENRAD.
He filed an ENRAD?
Yeah.
So, so we are acting on the ENRAD by, by doing a, a resource area delineation?
A review of, yeah.
Yeah, so they have that. Okay, so what we need is a motion to...
Hire a peer review.
Hire a peer review company to view their well and delineations.
I will move that we hire a, a firm to review the wetland line. That's a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Lisa, you will contact...
Yep.
Okay, and when she gets back, she'll send them the maps and they'll give you an estimate for that.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we have to continue that, okay, we're going to continue this, this hearing because we have to have the peer review. So we have a motion to continue the hearing?
We do, yes.
Okay, is there a second to continue the hearing?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a peer review and motion to continue.
We'll get estimates for the next meeting.
Right. Okay, well, they can come down and do it in a day. Oh, okay, all right, okay. But the other one will probably be Beta. Okay. Okay, we have another new hearing, it's an ENRAD application by RJR Properties, old, zero old Horton Street, map seven, lots 36 and 36-1, DEP file number 17-475. Okay, Brandon.
Hey, Brandon, how you been? Good, how you been? Not as good as you, I don't think.
Brandon Faniff with Ecosystem Solutions, representing RJR Properties for this ENRAD on Old Horton Street. It's the area where they get the 90-degree turn off of Horton Street. This is a property on the north side of the road with a BVW. I delineated the BVW, actually, for the first time, believe it or not, in 2008.
2008.
It was the first time I delineated, yes. And then I get a call late last year saying, it's back on. So we reflagged it, and we had it surveyed and created this plan to submit to you. There is a perennial stream slightly off-site to the north and to the east. I want to say Papa Squash Brook, it flows into the Segreganset.
Okay, yes, that runs all along the north side of Horton, all the way down and, and crosses the street near the Reed Farms.
Okay. And the 200-foot riverfront area comes onto the site, but it is entirely within the BVW, and from the well and boundary, it's at least 400 feet away. So with it being off-site and my estimate around 400 feet away, we did not delineate it, so we don't show the riverfront area. However, I don't think that's going to be an issue because the riverfront area does not come in beyond the well and boundary, does not extend into the buffer zone or the wetland protection zone. So we're here to have it reviewed and see what the commission and your agent says.
I have a question. Did you pay the legal notice?
Oh, yeah.
And the green cards?
Thank you. I sent you the... I sent Lisa and Charlie the email.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you remember that? Thank you. I'm up with the questions.
Okay, any of the commissioners have questions? Okay, you have still a serious number of flagging, and as we have done, we would like to have a peer review, observe, and confirm the flags that you have done, not saying you don't do a good job, certainly, but, but we need that confirming.
That is the commission's prerogative, I understand.
And so what we would like to do is send this off to a peer review company or agent.
Lisa, are you going to go?
These are too big, she's too busy. She'll, she'll do a house lot. No, no, but this is, Lisa, would you explain to Bill about the size of this?
25 hours a week with no admin staff doesn't give me a lot of time.
I wasn't talking about the project.
It doesn't give me, I don't have enough time to do all the reviews. I can't do all the reviews. It was 12, 15, 20 flags.
Normal amount?
I'm sorry?
The normal amount for the peer review.
Lisa will contact someone, give them the map, and they'll...
We'll get an estimate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, all right, so...
Or a couple of estimates?
Yeah.
Get a couple of estimates because it is a residential, what are you trying to do, two houses?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
It's above my pay grade. I, I think it's one house, but that's...
Above your pay grade, wow.
Oh, boy. Here we go. Here we go.
I'm teasing.
That's just over minimum wage, right, Brendan?
That's right.
There you go.
When I started, it was $3.85 an hour.
There you go.
Okay, do we have a motion to have a peer review?
Uh-oh, we got it open to comment.
Can I say something?
Yes.
That, actually, the house was, the property break down the street from my house, there is only a single house in there, and there was a gigantic acre yard everywhere it's going to be, and it's already been delineated twice. So I don't, I don't know, we need a, a second poll.
He's stating that he doesn't think a peer review is necessary.
And why is that? Because it's already been done twice. And it's only a single house, and it's a giant piece of land.
Has already been a peer review on it, or did Charlie walk it?
Back, when, whatever he said, he said he did.
It's never been peer reviewed.
Never been reviewed.
It's been before us.
Yeah.
But we've never hired a peer reviewer or done a peer review internally.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience wish to make comment? Do we have a motion to request a peer review?
To seek estimates.
To seek, okay. To seek estimates for a peer review.
Motion to seek, um, motion to seek estimate for a peer review.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll have a motion to continue the hearing for this project.
May 6th, I'm sorry, May, yeah, March 16th.
16th?
Yep.
Make a motion, we continue Old Horton Street till 316.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Brandon.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
We have a new hearing, a request for amended order of conditions by Suites Noel State Park, map seventy-six lot five dash six-six and five dash one oh three and five dash one oh four, Mass Division Conservation and Recreation, DEP file number seventeen four six nine.
Good evening. You may remember, I was here in October on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation. We are designing a roughly two-mile-long shared-use path within the property that we own at Suites Noel State Park. And we had previously submitted an NOI for some geotechnical borings that were necessary to look at the subsurface conditions by the Center Street underpass and bridge. Ideally, we'd like to put the trail under Center Street there and didn't know the, the conditions and also around the, the railroad bridge a little to the south of there. In addition, we did some borings just to, to look at the conditions along the trail and have a better understanding of what actual construction would entail. Upon further consultation with our own archaeologists and our consultants, we determined that a number of archaeology, archaeological test pits will also be necessary to get a sense of, of the degree to which there might be archaeological resources in the area where we propose construction. So we're back to request an amended OOC for roughly a hundred test pits. Amy Ball is one of the members of our consulting team and she can tell you more about that. And I'm available too. Did I introduce myself? No, Gerald Ottler, Department of Conservation and Recreation. And, and I can answer any questions along with Amy if you, if you have any.
Now, that's right on Suites Noel, that, that, within the state park.
Exactly, right, all, all on DCR property.
Have you done any testing at Center Street?
We've done the geotechnical work, yes, but not archae.
And, and you found out what?
Uh, I, I don't believe we've completed the, the full analysis yet. We were hoping that there would be an existing tunnel structure there that was just filled in at some point. We don't believe that that's the case.
Town wouldn't accept it when they were doing the job.
What's that?
Town wouldn't accept it when they were doing the job. They were offered a twelve-foot, called it to go through there and they told them no.
Okay, well, so we're, we're.
No, just, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We think that's the best way to build the trail and at grade crossing. We would like to build a connection to Center Street, an access point, an exit point. But we think it's a much better experience and much better from a safety perspective to cross under the bridge. So we'll have to take those findings and that will help us determine the appropriate structure and cost estimates and so on and so forth, so. What's that?
Keep in mind dynamite.
I always have dynamite in mind. That's the nature of my existence. So, yes, so we hope to be back just as a project overview later this year in the fall with more advanced design and other public meeting to tell people more about our findings and our thinking about design and so forth. Amy, do you want to talk a little bit about?
Hi, for the record, Amy Ball, Senior Archaeologist with the Hoise Witten Group. As Gerald said, we had. Oh, am I not on?
No, that, that only records on a camera.
Here, I'm thinking I don't have to shout. For the record, Amy Ball, Senior Archaeologist with the Hoise Witten Group. As Gerald said, we had filed a notice of intent and the Conservation Commission had issued an order of conditions last November. And this request for an amended order of conditions is to allow for some archaeological investigations, basically to, to determine whether there are any artifacts of historical or cultural interest within the project footprint, which includes, of course, the, the two-point-one-mile roadway as well as Suites Noel Park. The submittal that we gave to the Conservation Commission shows areas of high interest only. This is obviously sensitive in nature, so we can't provide a whole lot of details. But they are looking to PAL, Public Archaeological Laboratory, who is the archaeologists, are looking to do about a hundred plus or minus test pits. And these test pits are, they're about twenty inches by twenty inches. It's, it's half meter square and to a depth of about three feet or less, typically in areas that are not covered with woody vegetation or trees or anything like that. The, the test pits are done by hand with, with the shovel and not a screen for them to collect the, the dirt that's, that's in the test pit. And then they sieve through it. They keep it on a tarp and then when they're finished with that.
Just an old railroad bed.
Oh, well, there's, there's more to it than just the railroad bed. It's also in, within Suites Noel Park. And I don't know if you all have, I have a couple extra copies I can send around. This is the, the overview is the figure A. And then figure A one and figure A two are the follow-ups of it. And you're looking typically at the, the yellow shaded areas. No, we don't have exact locations. And for the, for the reason that the archaeologists need to continue to get approval from DCR and then ultimately from the Massachusetts Historic Commission before they can, they can finalize where their locations would be. But the, the impact within the areas is fairly minimal. It's not open for more than, you know, a given day. They fill them back in. They, they remove the duff, then they, they kind of tamp that back into place so there's no open pits. And it, it generally will grow back together then after, after they've completed the work. The, the areas shaded in yellow cover a number of resource areas. Not unlike the geotechnical borings, there is some work in the buffer zone and the riverfront area close, in close proximity to the boring vegetated wetland and down at the tip of Suites Noel Park, close to the salt marsh and the coastal resources, which is why we're back before the commission to seek to have the order of conditions amended to allow this work to go forward.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So depending on what you find or what your archaeologist.
Archaeologist, fine.
Archaeologist, fine, sorry. Depends if, A, the project kind of gets held up, right?
Well, the, the intent here is to fi, you know, to, to research the areas where the approximate footprint of the, the actual multi-use path would occur and the amenities. And I don't know whether they would necessarily avoid something, but I think it allows them to collect and preserve any artifacts that may be found within that footprint so that they're not lost. Was that?
Could get more extensive or no?
I think they have, they have a, a provision for about another twenty in addition to the one hundred, if they were to find sort of a, a quote hotspot of, of areas and then they can do an array outside of that area to see just the extent of that.
What's a hotspot?
A hotspot, they might find a number of, of artifacts within a given little.
Arrowheads or?
Um, I think it could be in many things, actually. They're, they're looking for both pre-contact North American, Native American artifacts as well as sort of post-contact Euro-American, so, you know, more modern, modern artifacts.
They're still looking for Jimmy Hoffa, Jim.
Please don't let him be under Center Street. Any other questions?
Anyone in the audience with a question? Okay. Shall we have a vote on issuing a, an amended order of conditions?
Yes, you do.
Okay, Bill makes a motion to.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Dynamite.
Okay.
Oh, no dynamite. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Amy, I'll contact you when they're ready.
Oh, okay, that sounds great. And of course, we'll, we'll contact the, the commission prior to getting started with the work. It still has to go through some review process.
Okay.
But we're thinking in about a month or so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, do we have an invoice? Do we get, are we going to sign something for invoice for NICH? Okay.
Amy, do you want me to mail them?
Uh, sure.
Okay, we're going to review and discuss an invoice, seven eight nine nine seven from NICH Engineering for services rendered from August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two through September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two on the Hunter's Hill project in the amount of two thousand one hundred five dollars.
Brandon, Brandon just left.
And?
That's his project.
No.
I guess he assumed we were going to pass.
No, 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 NICH, it's NICH with.
NICH.
It's NICH, but that's people what Brandon got to do to tell.
This is the Hunter's Hill project.
Standalone engineering company. I said NICH.
Yeah.
It's a standalone hearing, uh, company. He was involved in another part of it.
Maybe he didn't know that they, they sent it in to us. Okay, is there a motion to pay that bill?
I make a motion that we pay NICH Engineering two thousand one hundred and five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a request from Carl Rabello for an extension of an order of resource area delineation off Milk Street issued eleven eighteen sixteen, due to expire two twenty-three twenty-three. DEP file number seventeen three seven two. Is there anyone here representing? Well, do you have the COVID years?
COVID extensions.
Okay. Lisa, you and I, we had talked about that and there has been situations on that site.
Yeah, so I've had to go out there a few times to review the perk locations. And, you know, because of the disturbance that was created there, the wetland has kind of changed, especially at the access point, point. So I'm going to request to you guys that you ask them to get a new delineation right now. Most of the flags aren't even up out there.
Now, the last time that was delineated was by Marvin Nova.
She reviewed it.
She reviewed the site, yes.
She reviewed it, yeah. But I did speak with her and she said it's perfectly in our jurisdiction to not renew the request for the extension. We can ask for a new delineation.
You feel that there's really a need for a new delineation?
Yeah, definitely.
Were the major extension work done in there?
There was, there was, at the access off of Milk Street, there was enough disturbance there to create wet meadow there. And that's not delineated at all now.
Okay, everyone heard Lisa's recommendation. Do, okay, Lisa suggests that we deny the extension and require a new delineation of their wellings. Is there a motion for that?
They've had it for seven, six years, right? They've had this delineation for.
Well, since, um, two thousand sixteen, so this is going on seven years.
Yeah, so, I mean, typically a delineation is good for three years anyway. And because of COVID, things got extended.
And a lot has happened in that seven. Okay, is there a motion to either accept or deny the request for an extension?
Motion to deny extension on Carl Rabello.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Charlie? I didn't hear you.
I said, aye.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you. Okay. Okay, request from Laura Jones for a certificate of compliance for eighteen fifty-nine Smith Street, map fifteen, lot thirteen, DEP file number seventeen dash one zero three. That goes way back.
Right?
One zero three. Is that you?
It's me.
Okay.
I guess when we built the house, we submitted a plan to the, to the Conservation Commission that was approved. But somehow the completed plan never got submitted. So it was redone by Lighthouse and all the plans were given to Lisa. They had been approved and so I'm requesting that I get a certificate that says the work was done as.
Okay, so do we have a motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
I did a site visit on February eighth with Dave Phillips. And I recommend a complete certification. Of course, it's all stabilized and it's been years. Things look pretty good. I was able to meet the new owners. They had been doing a little trimming along their driveway and I explained to them that they can't go too far in, so. But I have two copies here because Laurel would like to take it, take one with her, so one for us.
Okay.
Motion to accept certificate of compliance on eighteen fifty-nine Smith Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, let, let us take a minute to do the signing and then we will return to the agenda. You got a pen right there.
That's a pencil.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Smile, Laurel, smile.
It won't pass him down. Okay, Lisa, we have. Okay, Lisa, we have. Yeah, here's the.
I'll stop, it's gonna get recorded.
So what's the next step now? Does she have to bring that to the registry of deeds?
Okay, alright.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, he said they have to bring it to the registry of deeds. Regis, oh, okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request from New England Power for a certificate of compliance, uh, trans, this is for the transmission line C eighteen, uh, one eight one S and D one eight two five, uh, one one five, uh, KV. I assume that's kilovolt. Line transmission, uh, structure replacement project. I assume they're not here, Lisa, that that's all, uh?
They're not here, no. Um, so, there was a certification letter sent in by an engineer, um, so, I'm good with it. VHB does a really good job.
Okay, is there a motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
I'll make a motion to issue a certificate of compliance to, uh, New England Power.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do have that here, I just need to find it, so can you give me a second?
Okay, next we have, uh, to discuss and vote to approve funding for the purchase of brochures promoting the Conservation Commission Wetland Protection Responsibilities and Missions. Okay, um, this is something that, that I had talked about. I got, uh, everybody's, uh, whoever had input. Uh, I have, uh, the ones that I did, you, I added in where, where necessary, where people, uh, in this case, mainly Bill, I think, uh, uh, you wanted to add something in, it's in there, it's not maybe in the same place, but it's, everything is put together, uh, ready to go to Bristol, um, the high school there, what is it?
Bristol Plymouth.
Bristol Plymouth. Uh, what I'm looking for is, uh, uh, a vote of approval for the purchase of these brochures. I don't have any idea what it's gonna cost. Might not, might, it might not, it might not, but I can probably play with the numbers. Uh, you know, I called the guy, and he says it's cost. So whatever it is, it's gonna be, uh, a lot cheaper. Uh, may, maybe Nancy has some ideas. Uh, Nancy, you had brochures made up with BP.
Um, I, I have a quote for three thousand, which is what we printed the last time. So, um, and I also have a quote, excuse me, for BP for calendars. So I'm gonna make an appointment. If you wanna have somebody go with me, I'm gonna need somebody from Graphic Arts. Um, I believe the quote they gave me for both in total calendars and three thousand, stormwater brochures, is in the neighborhood of around seven hundred dollars. It's not expensive considering what you'd pay for a outside printing job. So if you have an idea what you want, it looks like ours is the trifold, I'm sure you're paying for a trifold.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I've designed.
Okay, if somebody wants to go, I haven't made the appointment yet, but the gentleman that I'll be dealing with is the same gentleman who I worked with for the town's anniversary book, and also that Mr. Terry and I worked with for the train, the Christmas train. So, um.
So we're talking just, if we do just their brochures, maybe five hundred for three thousand?
Probably less than that, but if you're trying to do a rough guess without actually talking.
Well, you know, I didn't know if color would, if color, uh, on the brochure was going to add, and, and the, uh.
As a matter of fact, Stormwater wants to change some of the colors, because some of its original colors do not, um, truly enhance the printing, and they can be difficult to read. So, we want printing that is bolder and color that is less overwhelming.
Yeah.
So, color was not a problem. Uh, the books that were done for the town, I mean, that was all color, like that flag behind you, it was brilliant color.
Yeah.
And, um, the cost for those books for printing, a thousand, was very, very reasonable. So, again, going back to what I'm looking for, I want five hundred calendars, hopefully with dyke pictures, and I want three thousand brochures, and there was an email that came to me. Now, they haven't seen what I want, but their rough guess is around seven hundred, eight hundred dollars. So that's a good price for what I'm looking for. So I would think yours, just brochures, should be half that.
Well, okay, so, I mean, I never talked price when I, when I spoke with Mr. Carvalho from BP, he's the graphic design, uh, and, only because it wasn't ready yet, but he said he would do it. Uh, so I don't know if we want to put a price in there, or just leave it open? Um, and, now, Nancy, do, do you pay upfront with them? Or do you let them send a bill to, to Stormwater, or the?
But, for a printing job, you'll get the bill when the job is done.
Yeah.
In the case of the book, and in the case of the train, because we knew in both cases, we would not have that money in a budget upfront. The town agreed to upfront the money for the book and for the train. So we could pay the school and get them taken care of.
Yeah.
And then, as we got money, I sold books, or we had money for the train, that's how the town got reimbursed. I'm still selling books, so there's still income coming on that.
You know, what I, what I could do is, I could pay for it out of my checking, and then, and then get reimbursed from the commission.
Good idea.
Good idea.
I wouldn't do it.
Well, then, then, do you want to just say to fund it? And leave it open-ended on the price, thinking that it's gonna be around five hundred?
And then if it's more than that, you just come back for another vote? We meet, we meet enough.
You know, because I think three thousand would, would be great.
Which budget are you gonna take this out of? The current one, or the pro, next year? Your current budget FY twenty-three?
Well, we.
Yeah, we have money.
Well, but we have, we have a couple different accounts there. We have the, the, uh, rollback money, we have our rollback money is, is. Okay, that, that's gonna, that's gonna be here.
NOIs fees or purchasing. Yeah, we can, we can probably use the other one, though, which is specifically for office supplies and things like that, there's money in there.
Okay.
I would not advise you paying for it out of your own pocket, that's a nightmare.
Okay.
Best thing to do is get the invoice when you pick up your order.
Yeah.
And it doesn't take any time to cut a check, I mean, we have the treasures that need to. So you just sit on the wire, and the check is cut.
As long as we have them approved account.
Well, you, you know what we're trying to do here?
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have brochures, we're gonna give them, the people come in, and they're gonna be asking Lisa for a lot of information. She can hand them a brochure, and a lot of the information will be there to get them started. We're gonna give them out to the public during, during whatever that weekend is that we have, uh, in the summertime.
Firecracker.
Uh, firecracker day, I plan to, to, to be here for that. And, and do, okay, so, um.
Cow chip too, yeah? Bill, you gonna do the cow chip?
Cow chip, yeah, I could do that too, come here for that. But you know what, the thing is, we're gonna have a lot of out-of-towners for the cow chip.
Yeah.
So we don't have to give them away to, to Fall Riverites. Okay, um, what is your opinion as far as, uh, motion on this?
I think it's fine, but I think you ought to contact Swansea to see.
We did that, that's.
I know you contacted Swansea, and you got a copy of their, their brochure. But if you ask them how they're going, if they ordered five thousand, and they only gave out twenty, uh, you don't need to order five thousand.
No, uh, she gave, already gave order, three thousand.
Three thousand would be.
I know, well, that's, that's, that's something, I'm just throwing that out. Well, then we can do it.
The information you're putting in there does not change. It's like Stormwater, you're putting out information to inform the public or whoever comes in. This is what you need to know about conservation regulations, and how we do things at Dyke, that's what you're gonna write. It's not like the information expires. And another place to put it, we have that rack in the vestibule at Town Hall with brochures. I'd also give, uh, a supply to the, um, town clerk, because when people come in for whatever, the brochures are there. They get some out with dog licenses, because our brochures start about cleaning up pet waste. But three thousand may sound like a lot, but the information doesn't expire. It's also useful if you're a teacher, you decide to do something with the schools, to talk to the children about Conservation Commission. Ours is because we have to have an educational program, that's why we always have all this stuff. But, I'm telling you, three thousand, you may have it for a while, but in years to come, those brochures are still valuable. You can still get it out.
You should, you should contact Bristol.
I, I'm gonna, I plan to, I plan to call them.
And get, get a number and, and a figure.
Well.
Yeah, give him a number, say, you want three thousand, two thousand, I don't care what you order.
Yeah.
But get, get a figure in.
What I, what I'd like to see is, is are you people going to approve this for payment?
Pause for you.
Okay, all right, and then, uh, then I can go, then I'm, I will talk to him. I gotta call him, and I plan to go there with him.
Don't pay for it, you, you want your own money.
No, no, I won't. And, because he has to download stuff off my phone, because I don't know how to do it. Pictures of frogs and, uh, and everything else. Lenny, no laughing, uh, I'm older than you.
May I just put in a quote for, we wanna do it Stormwater? I'm looking for pictures for a calendar that I wanna give out, Lights On, in November coming. I'm looking for pictures of the, in the town of Dyke, 'cause people keep asking me, are we gonna get pictures of Dyke? So if anybody has pictures that you're willing to share, and allowed to be posted, the town, let us, let me know, so that's my quote for tonight.
Okay, Nancy, you asked for it.
I've got a couple on my phone, if you know how to download them.
You emailed them to me.
All this stuff should have been added on the agenda, so we don't have to.
Okay, all right, so. It is on, okay, is there, um, a, a motion on, uh, on, on this item?
I make a motion, we, uh, vote to approve funding for the purchase of the conservation, uh, brochures.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
With a limit. You wanna limit it?
Well, you know, I mean, what's he gonna do? Spend twenty grand on brochures? I don't think so.
I hope not.
No, but I mean, you know, get thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand, three thousand.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Yeah, Charlie seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You, you witnessed. Okay.
It's early, I mean.
Okay, uh, discuss and vote to approve using available funds from the rollback account to appeal DEP superseding order of conditions approving the Strawberry Fields subdivision. Okay, we've already, uh, gone through this here, uh, quite a bit, but now we're getting the actual, uh, vote to approve our funding.
Is that legal?
Yeah, we did it, yes.
Can we, can we use our rollback money?
Sir, we got an opinion from town.
It's been approved.
Well, I'm not sure about town council.
We got Bill for it, too.
What I wanna know is, uh, if the state, the state tells us our rollback money. Wait, Charlie, let me finish talking.
We're paying, we're not paying the state, we're paying attorneys.
Can I finish talking?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyway, the state says our rollback money is to buy, is to buy open space.
And our town attorney says that it can be used for this purpose as well.
Actually, Bill, because the last, when we drafted it, right? Because it was me and you, we brought it to town meeting, remember? I was pregnant.
Yeah, I remember.
Twenty years ago.
Yeah.
And, um, the last bit of the paragraph says, "or anything there too." So it's for management of conservation lands, or anything there too. So that's both the town accountant and town council both said yes.
And we've already had it once. Not that I want to.
Open space is what the money's for.
I, I know.
Try to keep that space open.
You're not gonna keep it open, you're just gonna pay lawyers.
And if we win, it stays open.
They kept it open once.
It's a housing development.
It's gonna be a housing development anyway, and it's gonna, and it's gonna cost us all the money. But anyway, let's, let's vote on it, uh, and I'd like to see it unanimous with the commission.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to.
For the appeal out of our rollback account.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Okay, um.
Now we get into the voting, start.
Lisa, I, I th, updates on this.
Why don't we skip over some of the stuff? Because we have people here that are here for a specific reason.
I was hoping somebody could do that.
Okay.
I'm sure that Tyler, listening to us, are ready.
Look at all the smiles.
What do you, what do you think, uh, about our, our brochures and our rollback money? Are you saying, are you starting fire with it?
So, yeah, we've got, uh, we sent the letter out to eight eighty Hart Street, um, and the folks are here, um.
Hey, seven seventy-one Hart Street, don't see if we're not.
No, eight eighty right now, seven seventy-one is not here right now, but we can, can we take this out of order, please, Jim?
Uh, yeah.
Somebody just pointed to that woman right there. Put, were eight eighty?
They're eight eighty.
Eight eighty, Bill.
Oh, okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to take items out of order?
I'll make a motion, do we take this item out of order?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, eight eighty.
So, um, what's the last name, Christopher?
Whitmore.
Whitmore, um, Christopher and Darlene are here because we sent them a letter of possible, uh, a notice of possible wetland violation. Dave and I went out and met with them, and, um, they're here to talk to us a little bit about it. Did you wanna come up?
I'll get a pick-up from the second, yeah, Eric?
Fran, yes, all right. Hi, my name is Chris Whitmore. I live in, uh, on Hart Street, eight eighty Hart Street. Been in town all my life, bought the house thirty years ago. Um. You take, take the good with the bad. When I bought the house thirty years ago, the land, the house was a dead, it's a dead-end road. It was a dirt road, okay? And would take the good with the bad. Years later, they put, they paved the road, and what happens with pave? You know, you got a crest of the road, water runs off the road. And since then, we've had multiple houses being built, lot of traffic come down the road, accesses going into the woods, houses raised up nine feet off, off the road. So here, here we are with drainage issues, okay? We have water going different places than when I first purchased the land. I'm only here because, in the process of doing this, someone put a complaint in saying I was disturbing wetlands. I do have wetlands in the property, according to the GL, GLS map of the town, which I've talked to the town before about this, and yes, there is on the Muddy Cove Creek, there's an area of wetland. I do have a lot alone, and I listed, I live on the bottom of two hills. The idea is to break, come to town, stay in the town, was to raise a family, possibly have a small farm on, on the, on the property. Thirty years at a time, shit happens. I mean, we get busy, life happens, and the land hasn't been touched in thirty years, really. My kids decided to try to get some animals, so we wanna, we were clearing an area which was already cleared when I first bought the house. They had, the person who I bought the house from had horses. The, the area was fenced off in, in, in an area for horses. In thirty years, it's all grown up. So we were out there cutting, and someone, someone complained that we were disturbing wetlands. So we, we have a stop order on us, and so we're not doing anymore right now. We do have a company coming in prime, uh, engineering, I believe, coming in to evaluate the property. That's where I am right now, we're sitting there, I don't wanna get too far into it, because I'll let them delineate whatever's happening. But the process, process is, I'm not changing the land, I'm not, I'm not building structures, I'm not building houses, I'm not building apartment buildings, I'm not subdividing the property. I got twenty-one acres there, and all I want is a little farm to have, raise some animals. And now we have people complaining about it and stopping, stopping our project.
Is that all you're trying to do with that property?
Yes, that's all. We wanna put some cows, chickens, some pigs maybe, you know, and that's all we're gonna do. But we have. Yeah, I don't wanna go there because I don't wanna make a big deal about certain individuals in this town. And there are individuals in this town that have gotten away with murder. And he, he's one of them and he's, okay. But that's where I am right now. I'm here and we did meet with Lisa. And again, I'm not, I'm.
Dave was there.
Dave was there also, I'm sorry.
Did you cut trees in the wetland, Lisa?
Shrubs and trees, small trees and shrubs, but.
And these guys are gonna what, flag it?
Well, they, they're family. We have prime engineering coming down and they're gonna.
This is family.
This is family here, Bill.
You haven't seen you forever. I was the little girl. I'm the little daughter.
It's my little, that's my daughter, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's your daughter?
Yeah.
They grow up.
I got the home with the dogs. I got the home with the hunting dogs.
And that's your son?
Yes.
So you have it.
Okay, so.
We do have, we do have an engineering company coming. We've talked to somebody.
So hopefully they, they'll come in and, uh, things can be settled. They can let you know, uh, the boundaries and, uh, uh, where you can have your, uh, cow and pigs and chickens.
But the big, another complaint I have though with, with this whole process is we, ever since I moved to town and I complained about taxes before because of, of the properties, okay? And you look at the, the, uh, GSL map of the property, and that's what I saw the town gives you to look at. And it's, it shows you approximately what you have for land and, and what, what is located. And we, by going by that map is totally different from what is happening with us. That's all I have to say about that right now until I have an engineer to come down and tell me more.
Yeah, and, and the maps that they're coming out with now, even Lisa, when I go to the office, Lisa pulls up maps that I haven't seen before that.
But I'm saying, I'm just saying, a lot, a lot of reasons I'm upset about this is thirty years I've lived here in that house. Yes, my fault. I didn't touch the property. I didn't keep it up. And things have changed. Things possibly changed. And I, I don't want.
I'm gonna show them what you're talking about because I have a problem with it too. It's like going to TikTok for your news. If you go to this base map, right? This base map shows you a green area in Dayton and the green area are wetlands. But what it doesn't show you is that, or tell you is that this is approximate. When really, in real life, you have much, nine times you can ask any wetland scientist, ask the person that comes to flag your wetlands about these base maps. They are so inaccurate. So what professional wetland scientists use are what, um, soils.
Is it state map or is?
Yeah.
That's from the city.
That's from the town, that's from the town side.
The county assessors.
That's your assessor.
That's from the assessors office. That's, that's, that's the map they give us.
Assessors. I went back and had a conversation with the assessor and I said, can we get rid of the base map because it's really confusing for people? And I've had a lot of complaints about it. Well, they, the town shows the wetlands here and it's like, it's not accurate.
So let me, let me ask you this. A deer, a bird, or anything that's on wetlands or any land, they can eat anything they want. Pick up a seed, shit out a seed in a piece of wetland and you say it's wetland. And whatever they eat there, they plant that seed there because they shit it out and boom, they go to grow that.
Well, no, no, no. It, it only grows because it has hydrologic characteristics in the soil.
Doesn't. If I, if I didn't, if I don't, if I didn't mow my land, if I didn't mow my property, again, whatever.
I, I can't hear.
I'm just.
But I just wanted to show you guys.
Just ask, just show, show that too?
Yes, but I don't, it was, man, and we could ask Brandon too. Brandon does the same thing I do. He pulls up the soils mapping and you see the soils. And the soils mapping is gonna show you a whole different, you know, than this.
We got to charge them. You charge, if you charge, basically, your town will go by that map to charge somebody taxes on wetland and non-wetland. So basically, you're gonna, your town will base that map of what you charge for wetlands. So now you charge a percentage less for wetlands on your property, correct? By, by taxes. So your map is charging them more, less money, well, more money for having regular land. But if they're gonna deem it wetland, you guys have been taking excess taxes from a property that is no longer regular clear land.
It's not develop, it's not developable, right? It's being taxed as developed.
It's being, regardless of for the years that he's been paying taxes, you guys have been going off that map, taxing him on land that he gets to potentially develop that you can say that he can, but he can't.
We, we don't have any jurisdiction over that, but we could, well, how.
It's, it's a bunch of different, you know, it just makes more loops into it.
Again, I just wanna, I just, I'm here complaining about it a little bit.
No, we, we.
But the aspect is, I'm not, I'm not arguing with Lisa. Lisa is doing her job. She was submitted with paperwork. Someone, someone filed a complaint.
No, it was a call.
Well, someone called, yeah. Somebody called, filed a complaint, okay? It came in, it came in, they, she came down, she submitted a certified letter. We had, we, we stopped, we stopped what we were doing, okay? We, so in the conversation we had with Dave and Lisa on the fifteenth, we, we, we agreed that we were getting an engineer and they're gonna come down and do the rest, do the.
So let's, let's hope that everything can be taken care of. He can advise you on where the best places are to have your animals and, uh, uh, what you can do, what you might have to file for. And then we'll go from there.
We'll go from there.
Aren't you gonna flag it?
Uh, prime engineer.
Prime engineer.
Prime engineering.
Um, but we have other issues that are going on, but I'm not gonna bring it, bring it up at this time. It's not, it has to do with conservation and the stormwater. But I won't bring it up because there are things happening with, as again, town grows, people, houses grow, you put houses in. I don't agree with the way, if you're building a house on a piece of property and you raise that house eight feet, nine feet off the, off the road. You're changing the aspect of how water flows off that piece of land where that land was a field before. Again, it's all approved by building, building department and stuff like that. It's all been approved. And that person has, has, is in the process of building another house now. And in the process where he is building the house, he sunk two pieces of equipment last year. So don't tell me that, that's not wetland. I'm just, I get, I'm getting frustrated, but this is what we're dealing with. And I, I've been in town, again, all my life and thirty years on that piece of property. And it, it's a shame that you can't do what you wanna do with your land. And if you, and you're not changing it for houses or, or things like that, you're changing it for, to raise an animal. And they're trying to put a brakes on it.
That's my argument.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Don't be sorry. Listen, I just wanted to ask you guys, do you think, I think this might warrant us writing a letter to the assessors office, asking them specifically what we can do. Because if we remove that base map and just have them put an aerial photo, I don't, maybe the company can do that.
What company?
The company that the assessors use. If we eliminate the base map with the wetlands, there's a wetland layer that people can turn on and off.
But if, if one of the assessors needs the base map, then we should be involved in what they do. That's a separate operation. If the base map is wrong, it's wrong. Just we, we have to deal item by item.
It just makes.
Yeah, that map's just off hundreds of feet, you know what I mean? Kind of, it just, it's like all advertised with other people.
In nine.
I don't go by the assess.
No, no, I don't. It just, they do.
The state's wetland map.
No, it is the state's wetland map.
It's a state wetland map.
It is.
From the town of Dayton.
It's, it's wrong.
Lisa.
Nothing we do. We let fuck with the state too. We just deal with it as we see it. This is the conservation area. This is what we're supposed to.
But we're not the only town that has the problem with it.
Yeah.
Lisa's trying to talk.
Uh, Lisa, you have a map that you were looking at the other day and it appeared to be very accurate with soil types and wetland, uh.
Yeah, it was a la, so it's a layer on an aerial. So I, how I do it is I pull up the most recent aerial. Or if I wanna do research, I'll go back to see what it was before. Um, and then the aerial, I pull up layers of soils mapping, stream mapping, flood zone. And that's, and natural heritage, rare species habitat. And that's how I look at the sites.
Okay, so what site is that?
E- every site. That's how.
No, 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 but what, what is the website where you have all these layers?
Mass Mapper, but Mass Mapper also has a wetlands layer that is the same wetlands layer that, that the town, I believe it's.
Okay, all right, okay. Nancy?
Are you familiar with Neamap?
Yes.
Okay. We had demonstration yesterday in this room. Um, Neamap is the latest product that the assessors have. And what I wanted to know was, can you use this software to find basins? Because we're supposed to develop an inventory of all the basins in town and to find earth that we had maintained. And to tell you that this software, you see it when there are leaves on the trees and you see it when there are no leaves on the trees. So it's a big difference. Can you take Neamap, because it is accurate?
Yeah.
And can you then look at soils and wetlands? I know where there were two basins. So I asked him to demonstrate it. And I told him what street to go to. And I said, now go down this street and stop where I tell you. I said, see that dark area? Stop right there. He did. I said, that is a basin. It is not a stormwater basin. It's an overflow for a large septic system, okay? Now keep going on the street. Keep going. As the road turns, there's gonna be another dark area. Stop there. That truly was the stormwater basin. It showed everything, including the fence around it. So I'm thinking, um, as far as mapping goes.
Yeah.
Maybe there should be more looking at Neamap. We've got the software. There are other packages you can buy to further enhance it. But that demonstration that I saw here yesterday, it was open to all the departments and, uh.
I'm sorry, I couldn't make it.
I think only the police chief, uh, zoomed in. But what I'm saying is, um, for years, when I worked with Mr. Ferry on stormwater issues and he brings up maps on his computer. He always says to me, these aren't exact because, and he's looking at obviously publicly available software. But I really think, if, when Lisa has a, uh, has a chance, that she sits down and works with Lisa in our office. I walked in the office this afternoon and Lisa Tiedrow called me over and says, hey, come look at this. She said, you were talking about these basins. I wanna show you something. She was able to go in and she wasn't, she wasn't, uh, she watched the demonstration, but I'm on computer today. She said, watch this. She went to the street, she brought up the basin, she was able to color code them so that anybody could look at this and say, where are the basins on this street, whether it's a septic overflow or it's a stormwater. The software is that good. So I think that needs to be looked at. I think it's gonna be a good mapping tool to find basins. If I can find basins, uh, in developments that happened years ago. This may be a good tool for you to use and then drill down to look at.
No, I definitely think it is. And I have used that, uh, used that when I was in Swansea for a little bit. I do like it.
I, I, she's talking.
Yeah, I do like it, but the, the ultimate problem is the fact that there's this mapping that's showing wetlands. It doesn't even say approximate. And it's, and it's shown by the state and it's a layer that towns use. I don't think it should be shown anymore.
Well, all I'm saying is, this is private company. You can visit with them. You get the software package you buy. There are avenues to this big obstacle. But I can tell you, what I saw yesterday is what we already have. So that's a place to stop.
Okay, Mr. Whitmore?
Regularly. My only statement, also continue with this, is in thirty years' time, with the runoffs that occur in town with the, uh.
With the drive.
With the driveways.
They were cut in.
The driveways, the access points, but even the road itself, in thirty years' time of not keeping up with your property. And I agree with Lisa, soil will change.
Yeah.
But if you go back to the original aspects, you bought the property for one purpose or a, a, a sub, multiple purposes of use. I don't feel, I mean, it's an opinion, again, you have your own opinions, but I don't feel that it's right that thirty years later, tell me, oh, it's developed, it's become a wetland or something.
It's possible that it does.
It's possible, but I, 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 I don't, I still feel that it was, I mean, it just, uh, hint that because of processes of, of other aspects and not, and not using the land. And, and it may have developed into a soil that they consider to be a wetland soil.
So that makes it right now a wetland. And what, the legislature acts, the proposed laws and regulations always end. It's, the regulations in, in force now is what we have to.
Yeah.
But if, but if I mowed that land every day, all the time when, when I was younger, if I kept that mowed down, it's your fault. It is my fault. It is my fault. And that, I'm kicking myself in the ass for it. But the change is, you know.
It probably will change.
If I cut, if I cut, if I cut it down, if the sun hit, it's gonna dry out. And even that.
Cutting it down doesn't always help it dry out.
No, it doesn't.
But even that, you.
Trees, trees help it to dry out.
That muddy Cove Creek that runs through there is not a forever creek either. That dries up in the summertime also. So it's another, it's another.
It's an intermittent strength. It is protected under wetland.
Perennial.
Which never is dry at all.
He doesn't say anything. What's.
Well, if.
After four days, isn't it like four days by days during a season?
Now, you have, you have to do that with the con con, but we're getting off topic.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just an argument for.
We go by that.
All right, uh, are we, uh?
USGS.
That's all it is, sir.
Chris, you get a flag, just check it out, let you know what you can do, what you can't do.
Yes, sir.
Just be very specific with prime of the area that you want.
Yes, sir.
Well.
Okay, yes.
Todd Welch, I live at eight eighty seven Hart Street. And this is Whitmore's neighbor, his only neighbor. There's no other houses next to us. He's directly across, we're crossing each other. I understand this is doing her job. I was two years behind him when I moved up to Hart Street. I moved up there, he had a wide open space. There was no trees, no nothing. You could tell when somebody had animals there prior, you know? I'm just here to support. I don't see nothing wrong with what the guy's doing. Like I said, I'm his neighbor. Somebody could make some phone call. That pretty, I, I work in Boston. That person could be calling from Boston. I'm not even bothered with Hart Street, so that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it was a specific person that we know.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of different things. A lot of things. But there's a lot of different things up on Hart Street that I'm not happy with through the years that's affected my property, okay?
And, and unfortunately, no matter, uh, every house that goes in is gonna alter it somehow, whether it's runoff, whether it's, uh.
Nothing to do with house.
Uh, it, it, it just, it just changes unfortunately.
I understand.
And, and I see it in my own property.
I got one question. When, um, if somebody's gonna develop or put, build a house, does your body's have to be notified?
Yes, they are.
No, they don't have to be, not, if it's a house or if it's a wetland.
I was, I was, I was here, I was here yesterday for a prime board meeting. I was told that if you file Form A, Form A form to the town, that a body's still hard to be notified. It's, it's a Form A form, whatever that means, you know?
The wetland act.
Yeah, under the wetland act.
And the way around, yes, sir.
Well, Form A's, Form A means they're.
Okay, uh, I, I'm ready to, uh, I'm, I'm ready to move on. We've had, uh, a tremendous amount of discussion on this item. And I, I know you, you've talked, but I'm going to, uh, uh, say we've had enough on this. And Lisa, I want you to go, uh, start back up at the top, fifteen sixty-six Cedar Street.
If you wanna start with the complicated one, can we pick the low lying group, please?
Thank you.
Let's skip.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we go to Zero Horton?
I got no father's order.
I don't know. Zero Horton?
Can we go to Zero Horton?
Okay.
Map ten lot fifty-three enforcement ordered on November twenty eighth. Thank you, everyone.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. What, there's two Zero Hortons here?
The one that's second down under fifteen sixty-six.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, that one I have.
The motion that we take is under one.
That one I have an update for. What are you here for?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
What is it?
All in favor? Go ahead.
Oh, you are? Okay. So I believe, uh, Olivera's hired a wetland scientist. Yeah. So did you wanna talk about it or no? I mean.
Just an update.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned because the site's been altered significantly. You guys have all seen it, right? And we've got a large amount of wetlands there and there's no erosion controls at all with the stream going through there. So the sooner Stephen can get out there, we can figure out where the wetlands are, we can put some erosion controls on. So the sooner Stephen can get out there, we can figure out where the wetlands are, we can put some erosion controls up, um.
This is map ten lot fifty-three.
Wait, wait a minute, Lisa, uh, uh, we.
Yep.
Okay, we're starting at Reed's Farm at, at William Street.
No, we are not.
No, no. Oh, this is around the corner near the church?
Church.
Oh, okay, all right. I just wanted to know which one we were at.
So, but you're not continuing to do any work there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you've hired your wetland scientist?
Uh.
So that's a good update from them.
Okay.
They had specific deadlines, and because it was Christmas, and I gave him a little leeway, but I'm glad I reached out, 'cause you're Chris, right?
Uh, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah. Chris is his.
Engineer.
Okay. He's the engineer working on it. And what is your ultimate goal with the property?
Uh, just basically bought it for the kids, make it as a farm. Obviously, I guess I stacked, I overstacked it generally. In, uh, but not that no goals for it, just to have it. Goal, goal for is for the farm by this friend. So I could have the goats for the kids.
I, I couldn't.
He wants goats for his kids.
Okay.
But that's always, well, he said, okay, all right, and the other fellow's.
They're gonna flag the wetlands so that we can figure out what needs to be restored and what can be done with the property, if anything.
Okay.
All right, so, okay, so, so, uh, we're in the right direction that you have your wetland scientist, and that flagging will take place, and then a plan will be made as to what needs to be restored and where you can raise your goats and unicorns.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That was easy enough. Good night, gentlemen.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifteen sixty-six Cedar Street.
Okay, yeah.
Which, which, do you wanna speak on all of these, Lisa?
I guess so. All right. So fifteen sixty-six, we, we are very familiar with this one, right?
Yeah.
They've got the paddock, they've got the alterations. They, I, they want the addition. We gave them the permit for the addition and the enforcement order the same day because remember, he wouldn't come to us with an approvable, um, restoration plan. We gave him a goal, a, a specific order to have that restoration plan submitted to us by February second. That did not happen. Instead, they submitted a building permit application online, which I get tagged on for a barn. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, not a barn, the addition.
Addition.
The addition on the single family house. I did not receive any restoration. So no restoration plan. I'm asking the commission now, what do we wanna do? Because we have the enforcement order, which has teeth. You could find them. I, I wrote a note back to them on their permit application, and Nancy Pinto has sent it to them weekly now for now two weeks, saying, you know, conservation is not signing off until we have a restoration plan in hand that we would approve. Um, so do we want to issue a second enforcement order? Do we want to threaten to find? Do we want to find? What do we wanna do? Because he can only hold up that building permit so long. And we, he does have a permit. We did give him a permit, which despite my efforts to keep you guys from giving him a permit, you guys did give him an order.
Okay, if, what would a second enforcement order do?
Well, um.
Why not just a certified letter threatening to, uh, find if he doesn't?
Great.
Okay, as, as.
I just wanted you guys to make the decision at a meeting. I didn't wanna make it on my own.
Okay, we have to have a plan in by a certain date, or, or a fine will, uh.
Approvable plan.
Approvable plan, okay.
You can help me draft it if you want on Tuesday.
Yeah, I come up with some good stuff once in a while.
And by, how, how long you wanna give them?
Well, he's already, he should have been working on it already.
Right.
So, so let's say March second, or there, and then say, uh, our fines, uh, will, will commence.
Okay, and then I'll highlight a copy of the bylaw.
There you go.
March second.
Yeah.
It's almost there.
Yeah, why don't we give him, why don't we give him till the next meeting?
It was due two weeks ago. It was due two weeks ago.
March ninth. Well, let me look at the calendar here.
That, okay, that March ninth is a week before our next meeting. You happy with that, Charlie?
Um, why don't we say, yeah, March ninth would be good. That's a Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, um.
Okay, uh, do we need a motion on that, or we're just gonna act on it?
You can make a motion on it. I, I, actually, I mean, you don't have to.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'd be excited to do it.
This is an ongoing.
Okay, ongoing, okay. Okay, are we ready? Uh, ten thirty-five William Street?
Well, we skipped one.
Twenty-three seventy-one.
Okay, twenty-three seventy-one County?
Map twenty lot sixty-five enforcement or, order issued on, um, April first, two thousand twenty-one. This one is still dragging on. I, despite my efforts to reach out to DEP multiple times, I know that, um, I know that Gary from DEP, the chief, has been getting my emails 'cause I received the red receipts, um.
Uh, this is the one that railroad tracks?
Yeah.
And DEP's not, uh, I thought DEP took it over.
Right, well, last I spoke with them, they were going to escalate it, but haven't heard anything more. It's discouraging, so we could do the same thing with that one. We could si, send a copy to DEP.
Can we find them too?
Yeah, we can.
DEP?
They don't want to all do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Send them a certified, but they don't threaten a fine.
Um, all right, so we could, do you guys wanna send a certified letter to two-three-seven one County?
Uh, that's twenty, twenty-three seventy-one.
Enos?
Uh, do we, do we say, uh?
Well, we can, we can talk about the enforcement order that was issued and say there's been no activity. We're gonna send a copyright to his lawyer.
And, and now, now, will we, if we threaten a fine there, a daily fine, uh, beginning, beginning on such and such a day, if not received?
Do you, we, we should probably get town council involved if we're gonna start. I don't know. So when do you wanna give them until?
We have a question from the audience.
Uh, yes.
This is a combination problem that stormwater is working with Concom on this.
Yes, I know.
You are right in that DEP got involved. DEP said it would issue a decision. You know, honestly, I don't see how the town can step in and stop finding when in effect, DEP took over this case.
Well, we still have our local bylaw.
We need to, but we need to contact DEP. Maybe the Board of Selectmen can send a letter. I don't think we should get town council involved in this one. I'm more looking to get DEP to act on what they said they were going to do. And furthermore, if they issue a fine, I think it's got more clout, and they've got more enforcement behind them. The gentleman who is their lawyer does not get any cooperation from the client. We all know that.
Yeah.
All I'm saying, from the position of the, if, if this was a stormwater committee and this was before us, I would be saying to them, we need to get in touch with DEP. And since they're not responding to us, I would go to the town administrator, Board of Selectmen, ask them to send a letter, asking DEP to please issue a decision on this case. They took it over. Like I say, as.
Yeah, I, I, I know that, yes.
So, but if it were before us and it was us issue fines, I'd say absolutely not. They took it over. If they come back and for some reason say, we're out of it, then the town can take action. But I would not take action now that DEP's involved, instead they would issue a decision. So, but you gotta build a fire under them. So I would suggest you, um, contact the town administrator with a request that the Board of Selectmen send a letter to DEP by action on this case.
Who's gonna draft that, Charlie? Me or you?
Yes, I'm locking it down right now.
Are you gonna send it?
Yes.
You're gonna tell me what you're gonna say first? Are you gonna send it to me first, so we can talk about?
I'll send you a copy, yes.
When you send it?
No.
Before I send. Okay, all right, uh, so, a letter will go to DEP via, is it, is it gonna be from us saying for them to act that?
If you're willing to send a letter to the town administrator requesting that he, working through the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen vote to send a letter to DEP, you're just gonna follow the, the method of contact. You're gonna ask the town administrator to work with the selectmen, and the request is to the selectmen, through the town administrator. Because if anyone's gonna have clout, it's gonna be the Board of Selectmen. They can be door, us, the U and whatever. But these are the elected officials, and if anyone can start a fire on the DEP, I would hope it's our Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
And they demand a response. I mean, either issue a ruling or send it back to the town and we'll do something. But other than that, that's who you and I go.
Okay.
And the other point, our legal budget is taking a beating this year. I'm sure you guys will.
I don't think it'll go that far.
The note doesn't cost as much.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're, we're, we're all set on that one?
Wanna take a vote on it? A vote to, uh?
Request, send a letter to?
Town, town administrator.
Town administrator requesting the selectmen act upon, uh, notify DEP that they should act upon the, uh, the, the events at County Street. Okay, is there a motion? Someone's gotta word that.
I make a motion that we, uh, notify the town administrator and the selectmen of a problem on County Street, and have them, uh, follow up, uh,
With DEP.
With their correspondence for DEP.
Okay, sounds good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm next. Ten thirty-five William Street. Letter was issued on April twenty-eighth, two thousand one. Um, this gentleman has previous filing, zero four zero three. They continued to get a building permit to build a garage. The guy was adamant with me when we first went out there, when I first went out there to meet with him, that he had his building permit, he had everything that he needed from the building inspector, and he didn't have to deal with me. We went back and forth several times. And I told him, the wetlands that his engineer showed for the garage is wrong. The wetlands that was shown on his house permit was correct. So I don't know how he got a building permit, but it was before my time.
Okay, okay.
Um, so the gentleman has been dragging his feet with complying, but he's made ma, major alterations, including the garage. Um, alterations in the wetland, alteration in the twenty-five foot no, no touch, and the fifty-foot no build. The garage is definitely within fifty feet.
But he got a permit for it.
He did cutting in the back. He got a permit for the garage. So that permit was issued three years, I believe, three years ago or so, before I came on. Um, however, I'm trying to get this guy into compliance. I keep checking in with Outback periodically, 'cause I deal with him enough to see what's going on with it. And they haven't heard from him. So I don't know what you guys wanna do about that one, but I'm sick of seeing it on here as well.
Okay, what, what would he have to do to, uh, I mean, he's not gonna pull down his garage now.
No, it's an after the fact permit, but he also needs some restoration. We've taught, him and I met with, out back in the field. We talked about what they needed, what he needed to do, and that was last year, so it's like, time to.
Have a threat there, though.
No, but when I tried to threaten him, he said, go ahead, I'll sue the town because the building inspector gave me the permit.
Well, we, we don't have to deal with the building permit. He has alterations, altered wetlands, and we're asking him for restoration. We don't need to discuss.
Well, he has a structure that's unpermitted, so if he's gonna put a restoration plan together, then Outback's gonna locate.
Well, he cut, he cut and altered wetlands.
He cut and altered some wetlands, and then a lot of the twenty-five foot no touch, yeah.
Under our bylaw. Yes, but the rest of, uh, DEP's involved too, with the back, backyard.
No, DEP's not involved.
It's all under our bylaw.
It, DEP's not involved, I mean, I haven't, so.
Guilt ratios, and they, DEP's as well.
I never sent, I never sent an enforcement order to him. It was just a letter, 'cause he was working with me for a while, so I didn't find the need to send an enforcement order.
Well, then why don't you start working your way up in the enforcement department?
Yeah. Uh, sending an enforcement order and, uh, saying that he must act upon a restoration plan. Must, must, all in capital letters.
We'll get the ball rolling again. Uphill.
Okay.
Okay, that was, um.
That work cut out for me. All right, um. The next one is Zero Horton. This is, uh, Robero.
Yeah, we know that, we remember that one.
Happened in the spring, so that's the update on that.
Okay.
I did check in with them.
Now, you said that they did a perk test, they went in the back door to do a perk test, and nothing passed.
They went around in the back, um, with Todd, and yeah, nothing passed.
So, so the land is useless to him?
That's his problem.
Well, no, actually not, because his neighbor offered to buy it from him.
Well, it's in the, uh, address.
Well, they should, they, they should, yeah. He was here tonight.
Which the next one is, Mr. Burmer's property. Um, from what I understand, he's in the process of getting everything on a plan with, um, Oak Hill Engineering, which is Mark Mariano's business. Oak Hill, yeah. Oak Hill Engineering, um, bought out Otis Dyer's location and some of the staff. Mark Mariano, who I know he works a lot in Seacoast, and he's actually pretty reputable. So.
We're, we're on what, Zero Williams?
No, we're on twenty fifty Horton, uh.
Oh, okay, we're still on Horton. Okay, oh, I see, twenty fifty, okay.
So that, that is a good update from Mr. Burmer, um.
Yeah, uh, you know, I mean, he offered to, to pay him what he paid for the land, and if he can't build there, he'd be, what can I say? Okay, Zero Williams?
Okay, oh, yeah, I met with them today. Uh, this is Jennifer Barrows and her husband Sean Barrows. Uh, so, this is the one where we sent a letter last summer saying they had done some alterations. They were cleaning up the area. They did have a lot to clean up, but in the process of doing that, they cut a lot. Um, they hired Chris Capone to do a restoration plan. Um, the restoration plan never came to fruition. They, they just, he just had written a letter, it was never put on a plan. She hired Proline Engineering at the same time. In the meantime, the boyfriend and the boyfriend's brother just continued to work on the site. I met her out there in November, told her, no, I'll work within a hundred feet. Require you to file with Concom, stopped doing everything. Had to have multiple conversations with her. Um, saw piles of fill out there and went. Um, saw piles of fill out there, and went out to the site, actually it overtopped my boots because it was like quicksand, right? Big chunks of asphalt in it, that I guess they got from the Main Street project somehow. Got Todd involved, got Jim Aguirre involved. Today we had a call with them, not a call, they were here. I had a call with Jim, Jim was on the phone, 'cause he wasn't in the office. Explained to them exactly what they needed to do, so now they know they need to, they need to work with Proline to figure out the area disturbance, which looks like thousands of square feet, several thousand.
By putting that asphalt in there, they are doing themselves a, a, a great disadvantage because of the hazardous waste, uh, component of it.
Right, so Todd explained that, and they said they were gonna sift it, and Todd explained you can't sift it on-site. They were only twenty-five. We explained to them that if they keep moving in this fashion, they're going to be going backwards instead of forwards, and it's gonna cost them a lot of money. I think the point got across. They seemed to be, you know, Todd explained to them, if, if they take that existing conditions plan, take it, get an engineer and scale, mark it up, go to Proline with it, show them exactly what they want. We can probably make, you know, figure out if we can keep them out of conservation, just for conservation for the restoration. She's very concerned about not having a big enough yard when they have a huge area for it, they have a few acres.
It's a big area, and it's high.
Yeah.
Just before, uh, uh, go to Jim Sousa's house and come back a little bit on the other side of the street. It's almost on a hill, we might know where it is.
So I also explained, 'cause she said she would like to extend her yard and maybe regrade and fill. I said, "If you have plenty of room on your lot for your house, we're not gonna allow you to work in the one-hundred-foot buffer zone. If there's no need to do it, you have hundreds of feet to work, you know, huge area. Of course, you have to avoid any disturbance, and if you can't avoid, you gotta minimize, and then if not, you gotta mitigate." So I said, "Worst-case scenario, you gotta add some extra plantings or something in there." "Oh, I wanna see a retaining wall, I wanna clean that up." It's like, that's a natural area, it's a wetland. I don't wanna see that, and we're trying to explain, "Well, you bought it." A large portion of your property is wetlands. Dyton is extensively wetland.
Okay, alright, um- But we, we seem to be still heading somewhere positive in that one. Okay, eighteen sixty-one Somerset Avenue?
Yep, um, had a meeting out there yesterday, maybe Dave wants to talk, to save my breath.
I mean, we went out there, I mean, it seemed, everything was fine. I mean, it wasn't as bad as what we anticipated. You know, he's gonna grade his grass, he's, he's off the twenty-five no-touch.
He might build a shed. So this is eighteen sixty-one, it's down, if you take a left right behind, right before the trailhead there. You go down, you know where the trailhead is near, the railroad right away.
Yeah, okay, be- behind seventeen seventy-six.
Yep, seventeen twelve. The first, the first house when you-
Oh, seventeen twelve, okay.
When you take, when you take Old Somerset Avenue, or Somerset Avenue that, that way, the first house. Jackie Sears, Jackie Sears' old house.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, we met with Lighthouse, we met with the owner, explained to him the rules. He's willing to put some placards in and-
Give him a brochure.
That was, that was a person that needed one of those brochures, in all honesty.
Yeah.
You know, we should be able, when we go out there and talk to these owners and explain what, what their issue is, they need, that we should be able to give them one of those brochures, or something that-
But see, I, I'm, I'm hoping that that brochure not only tells them what they're responsible for, but the good things that we're doing, to show that we're just not enforcers, we, we, uh, do good things in town.
What, what, not to get off, off-topic, but what, what about handing out the bylaw? The Dyton bylaw?
Well, that's sort of included in that, what the buffer zone and the, uh, it's kinda written in there, uh, no-touch zone. Uh, I mean, we can't put everything in a, in a, in a, in a one-piece-of-paper, tri-folded. Um, okay, uh, seven, seven seventy-one Hart?
Um, okay, so those folks met with us last month, remember they came in, we had-
Yes, uh-
They had some storm, a lot of issues on Hart Street. Um, this is the south side, which is west of the power lines.
Right, right before the power lines, not to interrupt your-
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Um, I did stop there.
Yeah?
When we left, um, eight eighty.
Yeah?
Um, we, I was heading back, and the gentleman was out there, and he's a, he's a cool, he's, he's a Dyton person. And I sat and talked a little while, and he's got some silk there, and he's there, and he's, he's deciding how he's gonna do it. And he had his buddy that's gonna help him, so.
Yeah, so the ultimate goal is to get him to remove that dirt that he's piled up there to try to block the water. In the meantime, he put some erosion controls in. Tom Barry and I went out there and met with him and talked about some options for what he can do. I actually wish Hart Street Improvements was going the whole route of Hart Street, but-
Why is it not, not?
We're gonna review it so we can ask those questions.
I mean-
You have them, you do have his name in your-
Who?
Seven seventy-one Hart Street, the owner's name.
Yeah, not with me. Oh, I can look it up, I got the, the wife's email. So in any case, that one, I told them, you know, "Don't do it right now, because we're gonna wanna stabilize with some seed." Um, I'd like them to wait to remove it. There's erosion controls up right now. But in the spring, as soon as they can seed, I want it removed. Hey, you guys, how do you feel about that?
Spring's here.
Uh, yeah, probably right. Don't know if we're having more of a winter.
Nineteen forty County? Is that the, um, the, the, the car place on the right?
Yes.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the, well, that one, I did reach out to Derek, the owner, two days ago. Was told he didn't have an update. I said, "Well, we need an update, and the planning board's looking for an update too." And I had already told him, "Reach out to Outback, they already had a site plan for it previously. That would be your cheapest route to go with someone who already had a site plan." I reached out when I was sitting in the stormwater meeting yesterday, I reached out to Outback. Jason Youngquist got right back to me and said he submitted a proposal to them, so hopefully, they're gonna come to us for permit, a permit for the after-the-fact work they've already done.
Okay, three, final, seven hundred Main.
The name, seven seventy-one Hart, the name is Freitas. Bill? Ashley Freitas? I forget the guy's name.
Ashley, Ashley Freitas.
That's the woman, that's the woman.
Seven seventy-one, yeah, she sent the email.
Freitas?
Yeah. And let me tell you the gentleman's name. I sent them the bylaw. His name is Brandon, Bran- Brandon and Ashley Sho- Schofield.
Brandon? Huh?
Where did you get Freitas from?
I thought that's what she said.
Ah.
I did. Where did Freitas come from?
I don't know, that's what you said.
Oh, yeah, that's- We go redip, help with seven seventy-one Hart?
It's in the email, it's right there.
We're dealing now with seven hundred Main Street.
I think it's her, her maiden name. I just have the email and the address, Bill.
They're, they're still behind us.
Okay.
All you have is Ashley Freitas.
Brandon and Ashley Schofield, Freitas must be her maiden name. It's too late for me to think about that.
Schofield, alright, we're on-
Yeah, Schofield.
Seven hundred Main.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. Seven hundred Main Street, we received a complaint concerning the wetland and bank alterations. Um, we received it from a neighbor. I looked at some aerials, and it looks, a lot of it's pretty old. However, there's definitely been some alterations, and you can see it if I pull up the aerials. I'll do that right now.
But is it on the same side of the stream?
It's on the north side of the, of-
On the street?
Main Street.
Yes, on the north side, but now-
The brick goes right around the house.
Right. And I was there at the, at invite of the owner, and I went out back, and he told me where it was, and I, and I, and I couldn't see it. Where, he told me with the, the, uh, uh, activi- activity took place. I went around, I, I drove all the way around, uh, and, and this is, it's farm land, and I couldn't find any violation on the other side, and, um-
Well, I'll pull up the, uh, NASTI, the city address is right here. So it's this one. And what you're talking about, there's a stream that goes right through here, it's Muddy Grove Brook, right? It goes right through here.
Signal's right around the house.
Yeah, so it's the second house on the right, after the power lines on the north side. So, there's alterations, if you look. You can see them pretty clearly here. Where's this one? I'll pull up a different map.
Made two chairs.
What's the other seven hundred?
Seven hundred. So that's gotta be, uh, seven two, seven oh four, seven oh six.
It's right next to the old man's house, I think they're brother-in-law.
Not anymore. As, uh, the nephew owns the house now. Yes, uh-
Alright, you're in. Right? You see the stream?
There we go.
See the clearing right down, and there's ATV's, ATV track.
That's on the other side of the river, though, the ATVs.
Yeah, but it's the lot covers it. It's a lot, have a lot lined up here?
Oh. Okay, alright.
There's a bridge over the stream there.
Oh, you do know about it?
It's got a little bridge.
Was anything permitted?
That track, yeah, the track was permitted.
The track was permitted by you guys?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. We never-
You guys remember?
No, we didn't permit the track.
We didn't permit, I don't know, it was in conservation.
Well, this is, this is-
Oh, he said it was permitted years ago, I was talking to Stevie about it.
I went-
He went over here, all the way around on the different land.
It's just what's his name that made the complaint.
Okay, alright.
I parked in his driveway, like, in the woods.
So it's his next-door neighbor?
Yeah.
Well, but he's telling me it's, uh, okay, he told, I'm looking in the way-
There's no way we could drive around his house.
I wonder where it is?
I drove all the way around, and then I came up to it, and then I came to the land that we bought.
Well, his brother-in-law built that track.
I drove onto the farm land with my car.
But he filled so-
We were way beyond where we were.
This is the, look, the magnet.
Man.
And I just walked by, uh, the pages, uh-
So he filled right down to the stream edge, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Lisa, so what, what do we, uh-
I don't know, what do you, what do you guys wanna do?
He's already cleared the land.
Oh, look the way it shows the stream, it's won't hit, we know it's not there.
Oh, shit.
I'm a klutz.
It was expensive, you know?
I'm gonna dock my gang. We wouldn't know where that location is, the stream, it's not-
Lisa, have you made contact with the people?
No. I have not.
Sure you wanna get on this community call?
That's been probably cleared for a long time.
Right, so, Phil, there's a statute of limitations on Phil, but this gentleman that made the complaint said that they were out there last summer clearing, and he called the cops, and the cops came down, and there was a big back and forth. But I said, "Well, I wasn't notified."
Well, the trees are down.
What do we wanna do? I mean, it's just kinda like fifteen sixty-six, some of that alteration was also years ago.
Maybe, maybe send a letter from the commission saying that you can't work around that wetland area. The bank, the town, did they have a little footbridge across there, where they go with the, against the-
I didn't walk on the property, but you said there was a bridge.
I saw a bridge that you could drive across with a full wheel on.
Yes.
Only it was a long time ago, but I saw it.
Well, it's still there, and they're still driving.
You said a long time ago, so how many years is that, uh?
Want me to guess?
Yeah.
Fifteen?
So what does that do?
Maybe twenty?
I bet you it's more than that, because, uh, you know what I mean, the kids, the kids have gotta be, what, close to thirty?
Kids, they're not kids anymore.
My main concern is the bank, bank stabilization. Okay, so if the structure's there, it's unpermitted?
If I'm recalling properly, you know, twenty years ago, or fifteen years ago.
We didn't permit the bridge.
The bridge looked pretty sturdy, so.
So what, what would you do, Charlie?
Did you hand me some?
Yes, it's, yes, it's sturdy.
I, I would suspect it would make a site visit, inspect the bridge, and demand with all, find out whether it was permitted or not permitted.
Well, in order to have a site visit, I'm gonna have to write a letter. So it'll be a notice of violation letter.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
You don't have to go on this property, you can go behind it.
But there's all, there's all the houses.
This house is there now.
And it's on the side, and I talked to one of the neighbors, and they said that they moved there in-
And we'll invite them to the next meeting.
Two thousand and twelve, and, and that thing was, that, that track was already there. That was ten years ago, and, um, you know, I, I went to the farm land. And I could, I could see right along the banks of the river, and I, but I'd only seen so far.
You wanna go with this? It's gonna be a certified letter. Hopefully they respond.
All right up to the stream, where they, where they-
What is it, Charlie?
Very close to making a long bridge.
That sounds good, it's early too. Beautiful.
There's no public input, Nancy's already given plenty of, I'm kidding. I said, "There's no public input, you already done that."
Okay.
Oh, there was one more thing, I'm sorry.
No, we can't talk.
It's important.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we need to agree to a date for a meeting with Mike Mullin for our budget re- review. So you and I need to figure that out.
Wait, our budget, I thought that you were, huh?
They sent an email, and they said, "We're one of the commissions that hasn't had the review." We need to set a date.
You have to sit there and wait for it.
Now, wait, this is for the, uh, the funding?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, this is for, yeah, our new budget, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so, uh, when, when is good?
Well, you're hot, you're, you're out Tuesday, right?
Uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, I have a follow-up appointment. Yeah, no, and I didn't like that place that I went to, that they-
Do you wanna do Thursday, or the following week?
Yeah, Thursday would be good, I think. Well, let me get back to you, I, but I think Thursday's gonna be fine.
Let me know, and I'll shoot an email to me and you.
Okay, I think Thursday's gonna be fine.
I forwarded you that email, and I said, "Do you wanna do it the following week?", but-
I get an appointment in the following week too, but-
Oh. Stinks to get old. Oh, there's one more item.
But it's, it's good to be alive.
It is. Oh, there was one more item, don't close. Cat, um, Dyton Trails, Jeff Cavall, um, wait a minute, not Jeff Cavall, Dy- not Dyton Trails. Kevin from Dyton Park, the park-
Kevin Smith.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. He was here earlier.
Oh, he's not here now.
He spoke with Nancy, and he wants to talk to us about-
Funding?
No. Resurfacing the old police department land, the parking lot, around the tennis courts.
Pickleball, parking lot.
Whatever.
So, why's he need us?
'Cause redevelopment. Nancy, take the podium. Bill, you can't leave.
One of the things that's in the MS four-
One of the things that's in the MS four are that we are supposed to be working towards is the town. This is, this is again EPA. They're promoting more, um, pervious surfaces. So, one of the things we had to do, Mr. Ferry and I, was come up with possible areas where there could be either pervious services, surfaces created or if there's a parking lot or a something else going to be built, consider doing packed gravel or that stuff that looks like, is it cement dust? You know what I mean? So anyhow. One of the places that was listed as a possible, and I said to Tommy, these are only possible. It doesn't mean we're going to do it. If we do it, we report it. If we don't do it, we say that didn't work out. But we were required to come up with a list. So off the bat, we had the parking lots up at six twenty Spring Street because two of those are going to be having all the pavement taken up and they're going to be packed gravel. So that's great because that's not even our expense, but we can point to it and say, see, we're working with them. One of the areas brought that we talked about was parking at the Lane Field, parking around the old highway department garage where the tennis courts and basketball are. Now, what Mr. Ferry said as a possibility, there could be some pavement, but there could also be gravel. And those we could point to as, what we didn't, in this case, we really needed paved parking in a certain area. But we didn't pave everything. We have impervious surface, the parking paved, and we have pervious surface. So it's parking, but it's gravel. Again, the point is to try to reduce the amount of impervious surface in a community. So, um, that's the kind of things we came up with. Depending upon what happens to, um, the area up here around where the library unit is, I'll call it, and the land behind it. Now, there's a little bit of pervious surface on that land. It was the driveway to the house. But, uh, it's potentially that that perv- that surface can be taken up and gravel put there. You can still park on it since we don't have any plans for that land immediately. So that's how this all came up, uh, in talking to Parks and Rec. Um, again, it was, we had to come up with places for potential. So these are some of the places we came up with. So, um, Kevin Smith said to me, um, when that comes up, he says, I want you to explain what this is about. So that's why I was saying that it, it, this is, if it can happen, it would be a plus for the town. We can show that for, um, stormwater management, we are reducing impervious surfaces, so forth and so on. So that's what it's all about. Again, we're looking at Lane Field. Uh, we're looking at the, I'll call it the old highway garage, former police station part of that area. We, we're going to take a sort of credit for six twenty Spring Street because we did make a recommendation to the planning board to allow them to take up the blacktop and leave two gravel-packed parking lots there. That's a plus.
They also have like a, a, a detention base, I believe.
Yeah, but that's not related. What he's talking about strictly deals with parking areas. All right, so you may hear more of this, but, but that's what he wanted me to speak about. And again, it's directly reflected in, uh, the MS four that was filed. So when the next one gets filed after June thirtieth, they will, we will have something in there about if we're making progress with our impervious, impervious surfaces. And we can indicate, we've met with the Conservation Commission, uh, we've talked with the, uh, Parks and Rec Department and we're continuing to discuss this. As long as you show you're making progress, you don't get whacked. If you just say, we're not doing that, there's a potential to get whacked and we don't want to get whacked.
Kind of like we saw here, right?
Yeah, but, but seriously, we're not, we're not putting them off. We're just saying, we said it's potential, we're working on it and we'll continue to work on it to see if any of them happen.
Okay, I, I just had thought, I don't know who would approach these people. I don't even know who owns it. You know where we put the herring in, uh, on the Three Mile River on, on, um, on the north side of the factory?
Oh, that big parking lot down there?
Yeah, there's, there's a gate there and that is all cracked going to pot. Now, excuse me, can I have a pot somewhere?
Yeah, Mr. Ferry and I have been down there because before they started, uh, I'll say negotiations about that plant being turned into a growth facility. There were problems with drainage. And there's like an underground stream that comes from, I'm going to say Forest Street and goes under here and goes under there. And the town had to get an easement to put in drainage to help alleviate this underground stream thing. So it actually goes down and flows into a, a connection at the plant. But Mr. Ferry and I walked that whole parking lot and out to the river and this gentleman showed us how this drain would work. But the town actually has a easement and a drainage system uh, near that driveway off Summer Street and, um, goes down anyway. So, yeah, I'm familiar with that. The only situation there is, we didn't mention it because number one, it's private. Um, we haven't been involved in, in that yet, whereas they brought us in on six twenty Spring. So I feel that's a joint project with the town and the property owners. Um, but they do use that property for storage of vehicles.
Yeah.
So, the other concern would be, if it's pervious surface and their vehicle's stored there, you won't want any leaks. So, again, it's a potential, yeah, if that continues to break up and they're looking at something to do and they want to do gravel pack, certainly worth considering.
Yeah.
But, I mean, but I know exactly what you're talking about because we walked that whole area. And one parking lot sort of goes into another parking lot. It's this big area out there.
And then of course they had the area where the buildings came down.
Yeah, that, where that cement foundation is to the west.
You can't take any of that down or out of there.
It's probably contaminated.
No, it isn't. There's drainage hanging from that floor and there's water mains and.
Well, the other problem is.
There's all kinds of stuff there.
So much underground.
Yeah, well, that's, they can't take that floor out because there's too much running underneath it and hanging. Some of it's actually hanging from that floor.
The part of the building where the growth facility is, where you drive into the parking lot off of Warner Boulevard, uh, and we covered that extensively. And, um, even that one, there are manholes, uh, drainage holes in the parking lot with those grates. But part of the problem is, um, those drains, stone drains, actually go into the plant and the water drains out of sluice way that you can see visibly. And so that's part of what we've worked on because, um, Mr. Agnew wants that whole underground system, as does Mr. Ferry. Uh, they want a camera in there to check it. And then the camera will go through and come out the sluice way because eventually it goes back in the ground again. But when we saw it, um, one of the visits, we were out there. I remember Mr. Pilling was there and I think Mr. Ferry, maybe Mr. Agnew. But I could see water running in this sluice way under the building.
Yeah, I saw it too, yeah.
But, but anyhow, so what you're describing up the, the west end is actually live in the east end too. So, yeah, that's a whole nother situation.
Uh, before you guys adjourn, as far as this project goes, I just wanted to say because there's wetlands right next to that repavement, depending on where they want to pave, if they wanted to add additional area or not, it may constitute a redevelopment. But I think it's something that I need to speak with him about and we need to work together to figure out if there's an application.
And, and Mr. Ferry, because Mr. Ferry's the one that worked with me on the MS four.
Okay.
And he would know.
He knows.
Because he was there for so long when it was the highway garage, he would have good input on what would be wise to pave and what would be wise to leave as gravel. So, yeah, but that's what, but that's what that's about.
Yeah, thank you.
Lenny?
Just on that project, so you know, Mr. Smith has budgeted money for three projects for playground, for, uh, parking lot work and some revitalization of playgrounds. And that property that you're talking about is in the pipeline. I didn't, it is budgeted.
Oh, good. For which year?
I'm not sure, but I think what Kevin is.
Talking down here on, uh, near the old police station?
Yes. I think what Kevin's trying to do is get his ducks in a row, make sure everything is in place. Then he will. He's got three playgrounds that he's going to, well, we call it playgrounds, but three Parks and Rec properties that he's going to be working on. And I think what he's trying to do is get his ducks in a row before he decides which project he's going to do first. That.
This is the Trails Committee?
I'm sorry?
No, CPC.
Oh, CPC.
No, 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 Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec.
Oh, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. But he's, he originally came to us and wanted ninety thousand dollars to do them all in one year. And the Board of Selectmen said we couldn't afford to do that and only that. We didn't think that it would pass a town meeting. So he broke it up into three projects of thirty thousand each. I know some members of the planning board have spoken to him about concerns about the, um, tennis courts and that area.
Yeah.
The old garage. So what he's trying to do is to work with the different groups that are going to have an impact on that project. So he knows what he faces, which is smart. I mean, I can't blame him.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I mean, you'd rather have him come before you now than make a misstep and then get cited. So it does make sense.
Okay. I guess we're finished with input. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.